Good evening. The special call joint meeting between Longview City Council and the Conference of Plan Advisory Committee is now called to order. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes for the May 7, 2018 CPAC meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm with you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next order of business, we have citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. This is Elizabeth Ross.
Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking for Nancy Murray. She could not be here tonight. Unfortunately, she is under the weather, so I will be speaking in her place. I want to thank the entire council for their time. I understand that civic duty can be daunting and time-consuming. So, we at Arts Longview value your time and dedication to making Longview the pride of the piney woods. We also want to thank you for all the work that the city did to promote the bond package. We understand how many hours were poured into this initiative to keep Longview progressing. I am here representing the Cultural Arts District Task Force. Our task force is comprised of 26 active members of our community, including three members of the city staff, Ms. Laura Hill, Dietrich Johnson, and Sean Hara. We also have John Cromers on our executive council as well, and he is here. And we deeply appreciate their assistance. We, as a task force, are here to request the renovation of Moberly Avenue as listed as a top priority. The proposed map for our Cultural Arts District includes the downtown area, which includes Arts View Children's Theater, World of Wonders Children's Museum, the Sculpture Garden, Gregg County Historical Museum, and of course, Longview Museum of Fine Arts. In addition, our map includes the Belcher Center, where our ballet, our symphony, and the East Texas Symphonic Band Play. This is considered a barbell-shaped district. The bar between downtown and Laterno neighborhoods is Moberly Avenue. This connectivity of Moberly Avenue is integral to our plan, and we want to provide services so that Moberly Avenue is more livable. To that end, our 26-person task force campaigned actively for the passage of the street portion of the bond package. We like to think that we helped pass this with a large margin. And with that said, congrats on the passage of all of our bond issues. This was a phenomenal feat. We have been told by the Texas Commission of the Arts that if the citizens of Longview put their pocketbook behind the barbell shape, it will speak to the commission. Well, our voters have spoken. We will be sending our letter of intent in January with the final application due to Austin in June. In that application, we must present a five-year plan. We sincerely hope that the Moberly Street renovation can be completed within this timeframe. Finally, there is an economic benefit that comes to a community that has a Cultural Arts District. If we are approved, we will be one of two in the East Texas area. The other Cultural Arts District in East Texas is in Texcana. Nakadochus doesn't have one, Lufkin doesn't have one, nor Marshall or Jefferson. I think that would be a huge bragging right for our community. According to the Texas Commission of Fine Arts, for every dollar spent within a district, that dollar is spent three times. This is called the multiplier effect. This Cultural Arts District will be a positive economic benefit for both Moberly neighborhoods and Laterno neighborhoods. We feel that this is important for sustainable growth in the community and in recruiting efforts for large corporations. What we want to do is provide aid to Longview with this economic growth and provide the quality-of-life aspect that our current community wants and our future community members desire. We know you have lots of choices, and we respectfully request the First Street project be Moberly. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Before I go any further, I just want to, first of all, say thank you to the Conference of Plan Advisory Committee for being here and joining us tonight, and council for joining us on a night that's not a normal council meeting. And I appreciate that, and I want to introduce each person. Mr. Rob Basset, Johnny Madrono, Marcia Johnson, Nitra Anderson, Matthew Prosser, Tony's not with us tonight, Janice Shaw, Bill Perrymore, Dr. Florio, Steve Crane, Gary Ford, and Spencer Mack Hansen is not here. I wonder where she is.[325.12][325.12](Laughter). Guess she had to nail job or something, who knows? But I want to thank you all for being here and the work that you all have put into this and the process that will go forward from here, because you all are a huge part of that. So, I'm sorry I didn't say that beforehand, but I thank you all very much for being here. I have no more citizen comment cards. Anyone else like to speak and fill out a card after the meeting is concluded? Very well. Thank you all. We are now to a presentation, the bond issue calendar, logistics, councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to present to you all first kind of a timeline on selling the first installment of bonds and receiving the monies. Do we have the ... there. We're going to start on this next week, as a matter of fact. Our financial advisor will send us a request for information to start preparing the offering documents for the bond issue. December 13th, we have a regular council meeting, and at that meeting, we will have to vote, as a council, the amount of the first installment of bonds. We obviously need how much we're going to sell before we can go much further beyond that. January 9th, we'll have conference calls with the rating agencies, and if I may, I would like to echo the mayor's comments from his state-of-the-city presentation. We have a good story to tell the rating agencies this time. Positive sales tax, lower unemployment, just a lot of good things happening in our community. Come January 22nd, we should receive the bond ratings, and our council meeting on January 24th, that morning, we'll start negotiating the interest rates on whatever amount of bonds we decide we're going to sell, tweak the maturity schedule if necessary, and that night, the council will consider authorizing the issuance of the bonds. Following that, we submit all the legal proceedings to the attorney general's office. The bonds get registered by the state comptroller, and if all goes according to this proposed timeline, we will have the first installment of bonds wired to our depository February One final thing before we go further that doesn't have anything much to do with the timeline, but throughout our bond issue campaign, we repeatedly told the voters that the tax increase would be no more than eight cents, and it would be levied over a five-year period. The projections we used to come up with that were predicated on this first bond issue, bond sale being no more than around $51 million. So, CPAC, as you go forward in your discussions and deliberations, I would ask that you keep that ceiling in mind. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Moore in this presentation, the timeline involved? I think it's pretty clear-cut. These are basically timelines that we have to follow and dates that we have to adhere to. So, we will do our judicious presentations as needed, and we know that you all will as well. So, thank you so much for that presentation. We're not to discussion. We'll discuss the timeline and prioritization of the bond projects. Ms. Ishihara.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to repeat a couple of Mayor Mac's statements, only just to reiterate how important the work of you guys has been. The CPAC committee, so the minutes that we approved tonight were from May of this year, and if you look back at those, that was when our committee voted to make the recommendation to city council to bring forth these three bond proposals. And I just wanted to thank you and publicly acknowledge how engaged this committee was in making that recommendation, with research, with questions of staff, who did a lot of additional work for the questions that our committee generated, field trips, talking to public individuals and getting comments, and just researching the comprehensive plan. And I think what we learned through the voters in our bond election was that you all did a really great job, listening, understanding what projects were important and what the community wanted to see, and putting that forward, because it passed overwhelmingly. Most passed with almost a two-to-one vote. So, great job. Thank you all for doing the work that will really move Longview forward in such an incredible way that I am really proud to be a part of it. So, I just wanted to publicly say, I think all of you are wonderful, and I really value and appreciate all the work that you did. What we need to look at tonight is, like Ed and Andy have said, how to move forward now. So, everything's passed, very exciting. We can't just snap our fingers and have everything there. So, we need to kind of talk about how the process will work from this point forward. And Ed mentioned that the first bond sale can't or shouldn't be more than 51 million. That would mean that we would have two additional bond sales in the future. So, what we're kind of looking at is the initial group, and then two more each two years after the other. So, receiving all of the funds in approximately six years. That doesn't mean, though, that the projects would be completed in that time. In order to have our group kind of discuss it, city staff has done a lot of work putting together how those projects would move forward. If you think about all the time and effort that has gone in by city staff, that is really incredible to have gotten to the point where they had bids, line by line, prepared that we could take to voters, and now they've prepared what it looks like to actually complete those projects. Because each of those projects, of course, will have a design phase, construction, and various things moving forward. So, Roland's going to come and present to us about how each of those projects can look like, and what sort of time they will need for city staff to do the work they need to do, and then we can discuss and ask any questions we need to about how to prioritize those things. Thanks, Roland.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor, city council, Conference of Plan Advisory Committee, and Mr. Bonds. Wanted to, before we get too deep into talking about this bond issue, I want to talk a little bit about the 2011 street bond issue and the timeline, because that's really what we're talking about here, is the timeline. So, go ahead. Next slide. So, the timeline of the projects, they were staggered as well, and this graphic shows the timeline that we actually went to the voters with and said, "This was the timeline." And the three issuances, or debt issuances, that you would see, it was very similar to what we're talking about today. There were three debt issuances. They were supposed to be received, one in mid-2011, one in late-2013, and one in the fall of '15. And we did this to match that cash flow and the incremental rate increase to the taxpayers. So, I don't, this is something I don't normally do. I don't try and bring a lot of attention to things that I say that don't go right. So, y'all bear with me a little bit on this. I think the reality is, what happened is, the good news is, we're still within budget, and we have the projects under construction. But the truth is, the third issuance was actually delayed about 11 months from the third issuance. And you'll see in this bar chart that it moves over, and that's actually when we issued the debt. And then, unfortunately, Cotton Street, the construction of that extends beyond our slide, because we're still actually under construction. So, there are some things that we learned going through this staggered bond, street bond issue, and I want us to keep that in mind, and I'll speak to that a little bit further in the presentation. I thought the easiest way to go through this would be to break it up in the particular propositions. So, Proposition A contains the police department, which is by far and large the largest single project on the list. It's of utmost importance that we get this design and acquisition underway so that we can begin construction on this. Being the largest project, obviously, the longer you delay it, the more chance you are of having price increases. So, in this one proposal, and I'll kind of go to you what we've kind of laid out, and that's certainly just one way you could do this. Another thing I'd like to bring to your attention is the fire stations 5, 8, and 7. We've scheduled those and staggered those with the different issuances, where we would do Fire Station 5, and then Fire Station 8, and Fire Station 7. We have to be mindful that you don't want to impact the entire operations of the fire department, so they can still do their job. The next project that I want to talk about is the Fire and Police Training Center. Obviously, that's got a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of excitement publicly, about getting that developed and moved out of the Stamper Park area. So, this does have some linkage to some parks improvements that we'll speak with later. So, the Fire Police Training Center is also in the first issuance. The police department renovation for the existing police department, that's obviously not something we necessarily need to get started on until we can get the police department into their new facility. So, that's something that actually can be delayed with very little impact.
And Roland, I actually want to make, talk about this as a committee before we move on to the next slide, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just to kind of summarize in non-engineer terms, and then talk about if we need to. So, the CPAC had, when we initially voted, said public safety was our number one. That was our top priority, and I think, if I'm understanding the slide correctly, that that is reflected here. The police station would start immediately with design, acquisition, and then even construction in Phase 1. The fire stations would be broken up, just because that's the way that that needs to happen for the fire stations timeline. The training center would be designed, acquired, and constructed in Phase 1. And then the renovations, which would be on the current police building, obviously couldn't happen until they'd moved, so that's phased later. But so this reflects that public safety would be taken care of primarily in Phase 1, and the others just done, because that was what timing would allow.
That's correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion from anybody? I want everybody to feel like they can discuss or ask questions. I just want to make sure we were all on the same page about it. Yes, Steve?
So, we're starting with Proposition A right now. We're going to go through the parks and then the streets. So, what we're looking at are the priorities as we had listed them, but we obviously can't do all four if we're going to keep that first bond issuance at 51 million.
And so, if you look, and Roland, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that's broken up means that money is attached to that. So, like, the police station would be not totally funded in Phase 1, because some of the construction would happen in Phase 2, so some of that could be delayed and received then. And then same for the fire station, so anytime...
I see.
Yeah. So, it's broken up a little bit, where we wouldn't get all of the public safety money in the first one. The others would come in the second phases.
All right. Thank you.
If I can add one thing, and go ahead, Mr. Florio.
I have two questions, please. One is, what will the existing police station be used for? What is the renovation going to provide?
When we actually discussed the project with the CPAC committee, one of the things we mentioned was that the city has numerous facilities that they actually rent. So, it would be keeping whatever pieces we need to keep in that location, but then renovating that to house the other city departments and divisions that are housed in rental property.
Yes, sir.
And my second question is, where will the Fire and Police Training Center be located?
That location has not been finalized yet.
Okay. Thank you.
But it will not be in Stamper Park.[1096.23][1096.23](Laughter).
That's been finalized.
Any other questions or discussion or comments? Good.
Roland, could you explain which fire stations are going to be done when and why?
Fire Station 5 is actually the one that the police, the fire department has actually said that is their highest priority. It is necessary that you do 5 first before you do 7, per se, because 7 actually would be restationed or repositioned, and I would leave that to the fire chief, if he, correct me if I'm wrong. And Fire Station 8, Fire Station 8 is obviously, that was their second priority. That truly was the one to improve their response times. Where it's located now, there's some overlap, and there's a little bit more efficiency in response times, so that's why the desire is to have 8 next.
Why can't we do 8 at the same time we do 5?
You can. You absolutely can. One thing that, and I'm glad we're talking about this individually, but when you piece it all together and you look at how the projects dovetail one another, the way we presented this was actually trying to get started on the projects and things that people wanted to get done, without hitting that over the 50 million threshold. So, that's truly what it is, that's what these recommendations or proposal that we just drafted up is designed for.
We need to be very cognizant of that $51 million threshold. We do not need to go over that, because that's where we based everything off of those projections with our tax increases, and we need to stay within those ramifications if we can, unless there's some reason not to, which I don't know what that would be. Chief Perrymore, do you have a question?
Well, I was going to ask Chief Steelman, on the training facility, the $2.1 million that has been approved for it, that's not a finished product, is it?
No, sir. We broke that into a phased-in approach, because I think the overall number helped me remember is around $12 million. So, we'll have to come back and hopefully address those other phases at some point in the future. This initial piece just gets us out of Stamper Park and gets us back into a mode of being able to train our personnel adequately.
I have a question. Excuse me. What phase would be going to initiate for Stamper Park?
So, when we talk about the parks improvements, that's going to be in that first phase, too. So, when I mentioned that the Fire Police Training Facility being such an important thing to relocate, we had to make sure we had the dollars in the Parks Section, Proposition C, to do that. So, you'll see that's reflected in Proposition C when we get to it.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on. Thank you.
Okay. So, the next proposition is Proposition B, and it includes five street projects. So, the first project that I want to talk about is the Complete Streets Project and the Moberly Complete Streets Project. The reason this actually has the design pushback a little bit, and it doesn't matter, we can move the design up, it doesn't affect it, it's in that first issuance, I definitely wanted to give us some time to get, to do a request for qualifications. A complete street is a new concept to the city, and, you know, we really want to make sure that those designers are experienced with how you put those in place, what the complete streets look like. And we really, the extended period after design is a little bit desirable, and if you remember back in my initial slide, when we talked about the streets bond election and some of the things that we ran into that we had to push funds at, nearly all of those delays, when we did the streets bonds project, were due to utility conflicts or property acquisition. Now, you know that it is not easy for me to come up here and tell you that we need to use eminent domain or condemnation, and I don't think you all can recall when I've done that last. I truly, our staff actually works very hard to work with those property owners and get an arrangement when we're acquiring somebody's property. And so, that's something we avoid, but in reality, that takes longer. The other thing that happens is we experience utility conflict delays. So, we have franchise utilities in addition to our own water and sewer. So, we have the franchise gas, the franchise electric, and the franchise communication facilities that are within our right-of-way. Well, a lot of times, they'll say, "We didn't have this budgeted." We tried to get out ahead of that in the bond election. We weren't successful, and actually experienced some delays with utility conflicts and relocations on Magnolia and in Cotton. And so, some of those delays, if you see the long lag between some of these, the design and the right-of-way acquisition, number one, the right-of-way acquisition, you've just told me that's a placeholder, I've just told you that's a placeholder, that can extend for an extended period of time. The one thing this does is it allows us to coordinate those with utilities with final plans to say, "Here's what you need to be out of the way of," and in hopes, expedite that construction when we go to construct those roadways. This is a model that the state of Texas uses in their transportation projects. They will not actually let a project until all the utilities are out of the way. So, that's just one of those lessons learned. The next project that we have on the list is the High Moberly Entryway. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I just wondered why Cotton Street completion isn't a priority, since so much of it has already been done.
I would tell you that it's truly based on dollars. To me, all of these projects are just as important. Everyone else has different priorities, and so, this is just my shot at making the dollars work. Cotton Street, the original construction that's ongoing now, I promise you, I want that done before you did. The completion of the sidewalks and the landscapes that go from Green to Grand Avenue is definitely something that's behind the curve. It can be pushed forward. It's all, it all becomes about juggling the money.
I'm looking at the business owners who are suffering right now because of the delays that's been going on with the ongoing construction, and I don't know that they can hold on till 2024.
Well, those will be completed.
The project that's being constructed now will be completed, or should be completed by the end of the year. I won't tell you will be, because they were supposed to, we were supposed to be done before now. This is from Green to Moberly.
Yeah. But that's, so that's a good point, though, and so this is for us to discuss how we want to see that, these priorities done. If I were to summarize, I would say all of the street projects are phased to have design and right-of-way acquisition begin in Phase 1, so that that can get started. But then you can see where the reds are different, so we can talk about that. Right now, Moberly Entryway would be set to start construction before other things, and then Fairmont. And my understanding on those, and Steve, of course, can speak to that, is Fairmont is just set to fail sooner as a road, so it was a higher priority, because that was a safety need, as opposed to some of the others. But, so those are, those are for us to discuss. So, if there are other comments, now is the time to make those about what priorities you have, and how you'd like to see that, that happen or change.
Ms. Johnson? The existing Cotton Street construction right now has nothing to do with this new bond.
I understand, but I would just like to drive all the way down.[1572.11][1572.11](Laughter).
Yeah. I would, too. I agree with you. But that has to be completed with the 2011 bond issuance, not this bond that was just passed. So, the monies for that was from the 2011 issuance, and it's already there. It's just a matter of getting it constructed and completing. The new Cotton Street is this new issuance of bonds. It will be a whole separate, another Cotton Street closure at some point in time when we have to do that street. But the one that's under construction now will be completed, hopefully, by the end of this year, in the next month and a month or so, and then that will be done. And that closes out the 2011 bond issuance from that bond. Does that make sense? Thank you. That's a great point. Thank you.
I would just point out that, based on Ms. Ross's comments, that that does look like Moberly would be scheduled to be completed within their five-year timeframe for what they were needing for the arts, as well as the entryway being scheduled sooner than that.
Correct.
Roland, could you expand on, besides the money aspect, the desire to push the complete street out, just the experience in not doing that, and how you plan on gaining that experience?
No, a lot of times, and we've done this on every project that we've done, a lot of times, city staff, we have a very, the city engineer knows what our engineering firms are capable of, and who's the best fit for the job. Different ones have different expertise and different strengths and weaknesses, and we kind of get where those are. The process of making sure you get somebody qualified, I'm not going to tell you it takes a year and a half. I will tell you it's going to be very difficult, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, spending that first $50 million in two years. And so, we're going to be trying to get all these other jobs that are sort of trying to get off the ground, because we've got to hit the ground running with construction. I wanted to leave us enough time to do a request for qualifications. And what that entails is you request engineers, and there are even some engineers here in the audience, to come give us your qualifications and what you see is the vision for the complete street. And they bring the light projects that they have done and the ideas that they've incorporated, and we're able to review those qualifications and find out who has those right qualifications for the project that we're going, trying to implement. So, I would say that that's the only reason there's a gap. There's nothing magical about the gap. Certainly can be pulled back, and it doesn't impact cash flow at all.
Other comments or questions, or any feedback on what that looks like? Council or committee?
Okay. One thing I'll note, and I'm glad we're picking on the projects that get deferred, because one of the things you look at when you start looking at the cash flow is that the ultimate story is something has to get deferred, and that's the difficult job that you guys have. I get to spend the money and build the projects, but the difficult job is reaching consensus on which ones get delayed. So, I appreciate the comments. So, parks, Proposition C included a number of parks throughout Longview, and at the most recent Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, the top four projects that they said were the priorities for Parks and Recreation were Lear Park, Stamper Park, The Arboretum, and Cargill Long Trail. I think this accurately reflects those priorities that they said were their priorities. I think this accurately reflects those priorities that they said were their priorities. The other thing that, in addition, we've talked about designing or beginning the Broughton renovation and expansion. This is one of those projects that we probably want to find the right person that has the right qualifications to help us implement that vision of what we want Broughton renovation and expansion to look like. So we don't get the opportunity to do these kind of renovations and expansions on buildings very often. That's probably something that's a pretty critical thing. The Parks Department, and I'm sure Scott Karen has his own ideas of what that needs to do, and that's a community, that's a community facility and a community jewel. So, but we do have the design and construction beginning in this first issuance as well. The improved, the current park facilities, you'll notice that there's a lot of money up front and there's some lagging at the back. We have not gone into detail as far as, I'm not proposing which parks and which get delayed and which ones don't. The only thing I will tell you is that it is my current impression is that improving the current park facilities, the Stamper Park would be in that first phase.
Oh, I don't, we had citizen comment earlier. I'm not sure if we're allowed to take citizen comment now, but certainly after the meeting would be appropriate. For the committee members, if I were to summarize this one, it looks like all of design would happen in the first phase as well, with really almost all of the construction happening, and I guess that's because we get to skip the right-of-way phase on this one since we own those. So discussion from anybody on what that looks like? We had talked a little bit as a committee, too, about some of the larger parks that will be getting renovations, like Stamper, having maybe their council person have some public meetings or, you know, a chance for more public input than will really happen right now as far as what specific things they want to see. Some of the parks have pretty set, you know, things that will be improved, the smaller amounts, but things like McOrter or Stamper, you know, will have some probably time and space for more public input through the Parks Board or just through their council member.
I did neglect to bring one thing to your attention, and there are some of these projects that we say there's a long space between construction and the parks jobs, like let's just take Lear Park, for example. But in reality, Mr. Karen has already gotten the final design for the water park. So that's one of those things, there are opportunities for that, that if the bonds were received, he could issue a purchase order and begin construction of that. So there are some of those types of things. Pavilions might be another one. That can be early, quick wins to get some renovations done, but it's limited just on the funding is my point.
I have a question as to how did the Arboretum become a priority as a private venture over us completing the tasks that are public park facilities first?
Well, I think what you see there is they're not a priority over them. They're a little easier because they're planned, so kind of like Roland just mentioned, some things are easier to just, they're ready to be funded. So that is one that's just ready to be funded, and it's receiving funding at the same time that the others are. So I don't think we're necessarily saying we place it a priority, but it is ready to go, like some of the other projects. Like Cargill, I think is, well, is that fair to say? Pretty ready to go?
It's fair. Cargill will be an easier, the extended schedule on Cargill, forgive me, that's probably longer than what it will be actually, but that's true. That is correct. Some of those projects are quicker.
Yeah.
So if I understand, the Arboretum, there's no need to issue any bond for the design because that's already done. They've already got that in place, and it's just a matter of the funds to build it.
Is that accurate?
It is. When we actually bid the Arboretum job, they contributed the funding for a portion of that, and we had grants for the other. We took bids for the remaining drawings so that we would have prices on that for them. So we did solicit bids on that at the time.
Roland, on these construction phase there, it looks like all of them are going to be about the same time. Is that going to create a problem for access to parks?
You know, that gets into sequencing. A lot of times in our contracts, just like we did in downtown, we would actually say, "You can only work in one block." And so a lot of times, you bid construction improvements as a large job to get the economy of scale, but you limit the way in which they can implement the construction of that.
Marsha, did you have another comment? Are you just getting ready?
I'm just wondering, because I am a avid supporter of Paula Martin Jones, I know that currently they're having some issues with the pool heater. How does this fall into the ramifications of the park needs changing?
Sure. Well, and so it doesn't. And so kind of to speak to what Andy mentioned earlier, we have a real responsibility to make sure that we provide what we said we were going to provide to the voters that voted on the bond, and Paula Martin Jones was not included in our initial package. So it is something that is appropriate to talk to city council about and request additional funds, but it is not appropriate for us to consider as part of what we have here.
I'm not looking at incorporating Paula Martin Jones. I'm looking at that if we're going to do a renovation of Broughton and an expansion, that it would be ideal to bring the pool back to Broughton that was originally there because there are no other pools on the south side of town.
Sure. I think that that would have probably had to have been included in our initial number, but I think that things like Broughton, Stamper, and McOrter, those larger park projects will need additional public input, and so we're not going to figure that out today whether, you know, that's a possibility or not. But there's funds for those projects, and then how those funds can be spent can be really scrutinized between the people that will use them and their council members and parks staff and the Parks Board and anybody that wants to have a say about it. But I don't think we'll probably decide that tonight.
And if I may, good evening, everyone. I would just like to assure the residents in District Two that we will be having public hearings so that we will know and can discuss prioritizing and what's expected and what we expect in Stamper, our area itself.
Because what the bond provided for us was here is a set amount that's going to go into this facility, and now, you know, y'all can decide exactly what that looks like for those that are really invested in using that facility. And so that's very appropriate to talk about, and Nona will be glad to lead that discussion when the time comes.
Do you want me to talk about that real quick?
Sure.
I think that's a, you know, with the police and fire and the streets, it's pretty much, we know what is needed and going to occur in those facilities. With parks, I think they truly are a part of our community, and we want that, you know, input from our local residents that are surrounding those parks and in those districts that those parks are going to be the improvements for. So absolutely, that's, that's an integral part of being able to implement what we have put forward. And so that's, that's our intent is to hold meetings. You know, essentially what we prepared was gathered information from user groups and from people that have called and talked to us about those parks and the improvements that are needed and from the comprehensive plan and all those kind of things. And that's how we developed the line item budgets. We know, but we needed to have a number. And so that's essentially what that allowed us to do, is come up with the number to put into the bond projects. And so now that we have that number, now we can go back and say, "All right, here's the number that we have for this. What do we really want to do with the funds that are available for those parks?" So that's our intent, is to meet with residents and talk to people to ensure that we get as close to what they expect from those local parks as what we can get.
That's perfect. And so there will be additional opportunities for individuals that want to provide comments, or now would be the time to get those comments to your city council person, because as you can see here, design would start on all of those things right now. So while it's fresh on your mind, let's talk about it and what you want to see happen there. Any other comments on this particular slide or discussion we need to have?
I have a question. So we're needing to wait to discuss the funds. I have a concern because we did not include cleaning, the cleanup project for Stamford Park as part of the renovation of Stamford Park for the fire, the training facility. I thought that was going to be a part of the funds.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by cleaning.
For cleaning up the, cleaning up the area for the training area in Stamford Park, I thought that was going to be part of the fire and training relocation.
Like moving it out? Yeah, I think, I think that's true.
Not part of the...
I think maybe Roland misunderstood your question. Yeah, so moving it out of there would include cleaning that area as well, I think.
Yes. The monies for moving it and putting it in there are in the fire proposition. That was one thing. The money for improving the Stamper and Womack is in the parks proposition.
So if I understand correctly, at the same time you're going to be working on Stamper Park, you'd just be using the money from the Proposition A to clean up the fire training facility that is existing in Stamper Park?
That's part, that'll be part of moving it. I mean, anytime we move a facility, they have to level it, grade it, make it right, and then the improvements would come from the parks contractor.
Okay.
Got it. Okay. Ready to move.
Okay. So first, first thing I'll tell you is forgive me for the busy slide. I appreciate the comments that you guys have said earlier about large capital projects taking time to develop. All of us have played Monopoly. When we had property, we'd just buy a house from the bank and stick it on there, and in reality, that's not really how it works. So unfortunately, we can't do that with our bond projects or can't go to the department's store and pull a Lear Park improvement out. So this package and the delivery of them was delivered based on the cash flow basis. Another thing I'd like to say about this slide is I can assure you, this is a very aggressive schedule. When we borrow money, we promise to that lender that loans us the money that we're going to spend that money within three years. This schedule meets that goal with a little bit of room. And again, I want to tell you, this is a monumental task in the amount of money that we're spending. I think Mr. Bond will echo that we're going to have to really work hard to spend that money in that time. We're good at spending the money, but this is going to be their challenge. The next thing I'll show you at the bottom of the slide, this schedule was truly just based on a pro forma that was prepared by Hilltop Securities, who will be negotiating our bonds. So the first bond issuance is 51.3, and this is just the pro forma we had for discussion. So that's how these projects and their schedules were developed, was to meet these guidelines. And that, that concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions?
What is a proposed second bond and then third bond issuance?
Go back one. The second bond is 26,985 and then 25,900.
All right. Thank you.
So the numbers that you have worked in would correspond with what Ed has suggested that we represented to voters on how the tax increases would come into play?
And if I might, I was a pest for Roland and our city manager for the last couple of days and kind of refined some of the numbers that Roland's been working on, and I've come up with a spreadsheet that, given the priorities that are proposed there, the first bond sale would be $50,530,000. And I can break that, if you want to know, by proposition. Public Safety, Prop A, $25,755. And again, these are just for discussion, but Prop B, Streets, $7,210,000, and Parks,
Mr. Moore, I appreciate your delineation of these funds, and I think it's very appropriate that we look at this because, once again, we're going to, we're going to stay within that $51 million. And Roland, I want to appreciate, thank you for your presentation. It's very, very specific and very on point. I just want to make one clarification. And I know when you're saying we're going to have trouble spending the money, you don't, you're not really saying that we have too much money, that we have too much in our bond. You're saying that sometimes it's hard to get all the jobs done within the amount of time that we have to spend that money, but we did not overprice the bond. Let's make that very clear. These are monies that we need to get these projects done, and we will do it as timely as possible, but sometimes constraints do affect us, and we do have unforeseen things that come up that will make a challenge. But we will meet those challenges, and we will provide the city what we promised and will provide them, and we'll do it in a way that we told the voters we would do it. So I just want to make that very clear. Any discussion on Mr. Moore's proposition that he has placed before us?
And one more comment, Mayor, if I might. Also, on our December 13 council meeting agenda, there will be a resolution called a reimbursement resolution that will allow the city to get started on some of these low-hanging projects like right now, and then reimburse ourselves out of bond proceeds after they're delivered in late February.
And also, Council and CPAC Committee, please note, we are here tonight to gain information and start formulating a timeline. We're not here tonight to make any decisions on this. This is, there'll be no final decision made tonight. This is just a, an exercise in looking at the big picture, seeing the scope of what's before us, and start to prioritize and organize because we do not want moss to grow under our feet. We want to get this going as quick as we can because that's what we did this for. So just know that that's our goal tonight, is to hear what we've heard, and I appreciate all the presentations, they've made it very clear, but it will take some time to digest this. This will not be something that we will be able to look at and go, "Yes, yes, and yes." Not all of us have the same level of expertise with bonds as Mr. Moore does, and so this comes easier to him than most of us. But we can all digest the magnitude of what is before us, and we will start to prioritize, and it will, you all will give us your feedback, and council will take direction, and council will make a decision on where we, where we proceed. So that's where we are tonight, so...
Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank CPAC members from District Five and from the other districts. You people put in a lot of time and effort. I imagine some of you missed work, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys did on this, on this bond election, so thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Mayor, how you doing?
I'm good, sir. Thank you. Good to see you, sir.
Always. We spoke here together, remember? You were here, I was there. Yes, I remember those, those days. I've been a member of the CPAC group and been very pleased with the, with staff information, presentation, and delivery. But I believe that mostly what the citizens are mostly interested in, and since we've had a great deal of citizens that really supported all three sections of the bond, is how their taxes are going to be increased to phases. And I think that's the important part, that to clear up so the citizens who's paying the taxes will understand how much taxes they would be paying in each phase. And I would like Mr. Moore to explain that to the citizens so they can feel comfortable with the amount of money that they will be paying and how much their taxes will be increased per section of the bond sales. So, so could you do that for me, please, sir?
Yes, sir. All along, we estimated that the maximum tax increase would be eight cents per $100 valuation, and that that tax increase would be phased in over about a five-year period. Given the bond sale schedule that we're looking at here, the first of those tax increases will be levied in October of 2019 for the, for the 1920 fiscal year. And then the subsequent tax increases to get up to the eight cents will follow in the, in the subsequent four years, depending on the amount of bonds we sell at any given But it's going to be no more than eight cents, and it'll be phased in.
Okay. But let's say the first phase, do you have an estimate about how much that first phase would be?
First phase is probably going to be somewhere between 4.5 and 5 cents.
Okay. And then, and then it'll phase all the way up to eight?
And then the remaining balance getting to the eight cents would be phased in over the subsequent three or four years.
Okay. If the whole 104 million is worth eight cents, you know, if we're doing 51 million to start with, it's about, you know, almost half of the 104, so it'll be almost half of the eight cents will be in the first phase, and then the other two phases will come. The other half and then half again will come as the other two phases come through. So most likely, Tony, it'll be somewhere in the 4.5 cent range, then two cents, and then a cent and a half or something like that as the phases come in. But the first one will be the largest because it'll be the largest draw at the 51 million, which is almost half of the bond issuance.
Okay, so like on the average, a citizen would probably pay, let's say if you got a $100,000 house?
Forty dollars.
Okay, about forty dollars more.
Forty to 45 dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Correct. Okay, and, and I think that's very valuable that the city, that the citizen can under- Okay, and, and, and I think that's very valuable, that the city, that the citizen can understand, and I think feel comfortable, even though I, I believe they felt comfortable with voting for it, but also, too, they have to have the, the numbers to, more or less, to round it off, so they can sleep at night and maybe do their budget. One last thing. The presenter gave a term that I haven't heard in a thousand years, and we used to use it in English, but they don't use it no more, and I, and I haven't seen them use it in, in school anymore. It's called a placeholder. Now, I haven't seen that term used anymore, and I don't know where he got his term from, but it's a very valuable term. But anyway, you know, it's, it's just impressed me that he used that. So, okay, but thank y'all very much, and I do appreciate y'all supporting the bond, and hopefully it'll go pretty smooth. Thank y'all. Thank you, Tony.
We actually, our CPAC is going to vote on that.
Right. I'm, I'm good. We do have an Ash item where the, the conservative timeline and prioritization of bond projects to make the recommendations for the city council consideration from the CPAC committee. Correct.
Okay. Do you want to do that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? So, well, council will not take any action tonight. Our CPAC committee, we have an action item to make the recommendation to council with any changes we may want to discuss, or as presented. Yes, Dr. Florio?
Will the fact that the location for the safety training facility hasn't been chosen, will that materially affect the issuance of the first bonds?
No, we're, yeah, just issuing the amount, and in fact, intentionally are not talking about the location, so that if it were to be acquired, it wouldn't be public knowledge where the price would be increased.
Those dirty rascals.
Thank you.
Is there any other CPAC discussion, or I believe we need a motion to approve the recommendations as presented by staff?
Did we make the motion?
You do.
Yes, sir.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, guys.
Motion carries. Thank you all, once again, for your service, for your commitment to this community, for the time you have put in, but I hate to say it's not over. We're not through yet, so we appreciate that, and I appreciate everyone in attendance tonight, coming and being here. And even though you might not have voiced an opinion, your presence here voices your support, and that's the most important thing. We appreciate that, and so, we'll, we look forward to doing this again and being with you all. I also want to encourage you to get with your council members. Give them your information, give them your input and your feedback. Give the CPAC committee members that are from your district. There are two members from each district that are present. I know you all realize that, but each district has two representatives. So, if you would like to give your council, your council representatives' input, or your CPAC committee representatives' input, please do so, because that's the communication we're looking for. This is not something this council is going to decide. The citizens voted on it, the citizens will decide. We're just the vehicle through which this will, will take place. So, I'm encouraged by the participation, I'm encouraged by what we see here, and I thank you all for your input, and Mr. Moore, for your planning on this, and your expertise, and Kristen, for yours as well. So, if that's, if that's all, then we will, we will be adjourned. Thank you all for coming.